The decision is not quite there, bro. I request our deputy chief minister MP MP Alim Saik Alisulaiman to lead us for the invocation, please stand for the invocation. To be to be part to be followed by the national anthem and the Bangsa Moro hymn. Please stand.
Alhamdulillahimin shaykhan arrojim. Shilla rahmanir rahim. Alhamdulillah Robbal ala aliim. Assalaatu as-salamu ala rasoolilah. Wa qalabunaa ghnooni astajib lakum. Ya Allah. Ya rahmah. Ya Robbal ala aliim. Allah mahdina ilama fiqaynu wa shilaah li umatil islami walil muslimim. Walibakusmuhu ya Allah. Allahumma inadarnaa anfusana. Illem taufilana wa tarhamna lalakuna illa minar khosri. Allahumma alli amurana xayrana wala talli amurana. Sirarana wafilana wa salaallah ta'ala ala kharsida whamdulillah.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Ang pambansang Pilipinas.
Kayang magiliw, kelasas sigatana. Alam ng puso sa bitikoy buhay. Upang dihira, kuya kanang magiting. Sa manludupi, dikapasi si Gil. Sanagatap tutok sa si Kuya, salami kau pagkao. Ayuna tamtulakawin sa kong kayang minamahal. Apisakap, matawak, kuyta, kunpay, anakininig. Apituhin akarobya kayda, pamay liba tibinig. Luwana paraw ngawar, labit baksi ka. Kuyka kit sa bibiko. Aminigaya napakaywa ngapi, ang pagkay ng dahil sayo. Simulaon hanggang ngayon, isang naging layon. Magka-isaan, magkulon, karitingan tay bagutong. Ngayon tayo mula sa hamon ng dakar, diyaku sa paganim na uhaan lang. Inagaku sa puso at paliniwala, ang ihaaw para sa kabataan. Bangsan moro ay tanut pay, mula na pawis suwat buhay. Napayapan, katagukan, ay atinang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papalayin bangsamo ro. Ang samor, bangsamo ro, lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutubarin. Ang buhay kami sayoy magpamantay, mananati sa puso tisipa. Ang kaha kung humipay nga nagpuis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsan moro ay tanut pay, mula na pawis suwat buhay. Napayapan, katagukan, ay atinang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papalayin bangsamo ro.
The secretary is directed for the roll call. Roll call, honorable members of Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. Abbas Akmad, Abbas Haron, Abbas Basid, Abu Mujib, Alamiya Liza, Alauden Mosber, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Eddy, Amuluto Soharto, Aminuddin Abdullah Jiz, Ampatuan Baintan, Anayatin Susana, Antau Muhammad Kelly, Arnago Merian, Asnavi Idan, Babaw Ali Montaha, Balindong Pangalian, Kandaw Bay Maleha, Delanggalon Hasimi, Lumama Al Dasya Ilaiha, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Soharto, Estino Matarol, Gayak Abdullah, Gera Edward, Haji Abdullah Khalid, Hasim Abdullah, Hassan Hatimil, Iqbal Muhagen, Ismail Rasul, Chajuri Raisa, Jakilan Muslimin, Jikiri Albakil, Kahalan Den Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Long Don Jamil, Long Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makakuwa Jamel, Makapaar Abdullah, Makasalong Marjani, Makatanong Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawil Bailing, Mastura Eshaq, Matalan Japara Pulo Michael, Mawalil Emil Bahar, Mendoza Freylin, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Nur Reda, Mitmog Rasol Junior, Munius Hussein, Oranon Suwib, Pakasam Obaida, Pak Abdullah Hab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita, Parkasio Rondell, Piyang Ramon Senior, Ramos Jamila, Salendab Said, Salik Ali, Sanki Ali, Semao Mariaser, Semar Romeo, Sek Said, Silongan Aida, Sinarinding Cadil Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Tago Paisalin, Tan Nabil, Usman Azpar, Utu Basir, Uyoyon Sitifahani, Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillah, Rahmanir Rahim, alhamdulillah, wabihin asta'in. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, with forty-four members of the parliament responded to the call, we therefore certify the presence of quorum into the session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Well, certification coming from the secretary general. By virtue of the power of mystery, I declare the proceedings of the quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bismillah, Rahmanir Rahim. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, my courtesy is to the chief minister, Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, speaker, attorney, Pangalian Balindong. The deputy speakers, including the presiding officer, deputy speaker Paisalin Tago, other floor leaders, our colleagues, and guests in the gallery, as well as those watching the live stream, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we do have the order of business for today's session. And on the matter of the reading and approval of the journal of the previous session, I move that we dispense with the reading of Journal number thirty-eight, covering the session from February twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal number thirty-eight. You will see candid, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I further move that we approve the said journal subject to style.
There is a motion to approve this journal subject to style. You will see candid, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, we move to the item on recognitions, commendations, memorials, and messages. I move that we recognize MP Susana as an ayatin, Mr. Speaker.
MP Susana Ayatin is hereby recognized.
Honorable Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speaker, Attorney Paisalin Tago, the floor leader, Attorney Raisa Chajuri, fellow members of the parliament. This document is an expression of gratitude to President Ferdinand Romaldes Marcos Junior, for appointing member of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament and Minister of the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education, the Honorable Muhager Emiqbal, as member of the Committee on Education, representing the government organization in the Department of Foreign Affairs, UNESCO National Commission of the Philippines, and further congratulating the latter for his appointment. Mr. Speaker, in a journey defined by dedication and resilience, one individual stands as a beacon of advocacy for education and self-determination. This leader is at the forefront of a transformative movement, championing community rights while pursuing peace and development. On October sixth, twenty-twenty-four, the Honorable Muhager Emiqbal, Member of Parliament and Minister of the MBHTE, was appointed by His Excellency President Ferdinand R. Marcos Junior to the Committee on Education, representing the government organization in the Department of Foreign Affairs, UNESCO National Commission of the Philippines. With an unwavering commitment to uplifting others, Minister Iqbal has been a visionary force in shaping a brighter future. His early involvement in community organization sparked a deep passion for advocacy, leading to significant contribution in peace negotiations, peace negotiations, and the development of legislative frameworks aimed at fostering self-governance. Mr. Speaker, we have seen his crucial contributions, including his position as Chair of the Committee on Propaganda for the Cotahuato Revolutionary Committee of the Moro National Liberation Front, and later as a co-founder of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front. As a key figure in the government of the Philippines, MALF peace process, he chaired the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission from twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen, was a member of the Second BTC, and later served in the Parliament of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. His position as co-chair of the Intergovernmental Relations, Intergovernmental Relations Body for BARM was also noteworthy. As Minister of MBHTE, he has significantly enhanced the educational framework of the Bangsa Moro government. In addition to these roles, he is actively involved in various initiatives aimed at promoting normalization and sustainable peace in the Bangsa Moro region. As a key architect of educational reforms, he has played an essential role in developing policies that provides access to quality education. Growing on his own experiences as a Bangsa Moro, he has helped design an education system that reflects the region's values and culture. In so, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, this new appointment will significantly strengthen the relationship between the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw and the national government. His expertise in education will be crucial to crafting inclusive policies that holistically address the educational needs of the nation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, we now move to item number eight, and particularly on a bill on first reading. Mr. Speaker, I move that we ask the Secretariat to read BTA Bill number three-three-seven. It's titled "The Name of the Authors and the Co-authors."
The Secretariat is directed to read BTA Parliament Bill number three-three-seven, with its title, "Principal Author and the Co-authors." You are so directed, Secretariat.
BTA Parliament Bill number three-hundred-and-thirty-seven entitled "An Act Establishing a Mechanism for the Registration, Management, and Administration of WACOF in the Bangsa Moro, Creating the Bangsa Moro WACOF Commission, Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes." Author, Members of Parliament, Abdul Karim Miswari, Tarhata Maglangit, Rondol Parkasio, Abdullah Gis Aminuddin, Den Martin Kahalan, Hamid Malik, and Nur Reda Miswari. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Basit Abbas, Mujib Abu, Ibrahim Ali, Eddy Ali, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Ali Montaha Babaw, Bay Maleha Kandaw, Hasim Edilanggalen, Al Bakil Jikiri, Michael Mitimbang, Tawakal Mitimbang, Abdul Wahab Pak, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Romeo Semah, and Ali Sulaiman.
Mr. Speaker, we now move to proposed resolutions. We'd like to request again the Secretariat to read Proposed Resolution Number six-four-one. Its title, the name and also the names of the authors.
The Secretariat is directed to read Proposed Resolution Number six-four-one. Its title, "The Principal Author and Its Co-authors."
Proposed Resolution Number six-hundred-and-forty-one entitled "A Resolution Respectfully Requesting the House of Representatives and the Senate of the Philippines to Further Extend the Conduct of the First Regular Parliamentary Elections in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region to Allow Sufficient Time to Resolve Legal Issues Affecting the Parliamentary Elections, Ensure Broader Participation of Political Parties, and a Full Understanding by the Bangsa Moro electorate of the New Parliamentary Elections, and Enable the Bangsa Moro Government to Sustain the Momentum of Socioeconomic Progress in the Region." Authors, Members of Parliament, Baintan Ampatuan, Khalid Haji Abdullah, Jamila Ramos, Sitifahani Uyoyod, Liza Alamiya, Michael Mitimbang, Japara Pulo Mikael Matalam, Rasul Ismail, Jose Lorena, and Basir Utu.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer this to the Committee on Rules. Committee on Rules.
Committee on Rules, nito. Hindi ba simple? Hindi na na?
Simple resolution. Mr. Speaker, I think there may be extensive discussion on the merits of the proposed resolution. We'll just appeal to the Committee on Rules to convene as early as possible.
Yes, the proposed resolution number six-four-one is referred to the Committee on Rules. You will see candid, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, we now move to the bills on second reading. We move that the Secretariat be directed to read BTA Bill number ten. Its title, as well as the name of the principal author and the co-authors, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat is directed to read the BTA Parliament Bill number ten. Its title, "The Author and Its Co-authors."
BTA Parliament Bill number ten entitled "An Act Requiring Muslim Restaurants and Food Establishment Within the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw to Secure Halal Certification and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof." Author, Member of Parliament, Baintan Ampatuan. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Liza Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mualil, Soharto Amuluto, Rasol Mitmog Junior, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasul Ismail, Akmad Abbas, Ali Sankey, Ibrahim Ali, Kadeel Sinulinding Junior, Susana Ayatin, Rondol Parkasio, Haron Abbas, Jose Lorena, Nur Reda Miswari, Muslimin Jakilan, Sitifahani Uyoyod, Michael Mitimbang, Basit Abbas, Ali Salik, Romeo Semah, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Hamid Malik, Hatimil Hassan, Mujib Abu, and Basir Utu.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize MP Baintan Ampatuan, the principal author of BTA Bill number ten.
MP Baintan Ampatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, floor leader. And keep it short, Mr. Speaker. The sponsorship speech is the explanatory note of the bill number ten will serve as my sponsorship speech. Thank you.
Thank you for your elaborative sponsorship speech. Thank you very much, madam. Next up, floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we direct the Secretariat to read BTA Bill number one-two-zero. Its title, and the name of the authors and the co-authors.
Yes, Secretariat is so directed to read BTA Parliament Bill number one-two-zero. Its title, "The Authors and the Co-authors."
BTA Parliament Bill number one-hundred-and-twenty entitled "An Act Upgrading the Existing South Upi Municipal Hospital in Magindanaw del Sur from ten-bed into fifty-bed capacity and Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes." Author, Members of Parliament, Frölin Mendoza and Eddy Ali. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Kadeel Sinulinding Junior, Michael Mitimbang, Rasol Mitmog Junior, Ramon Piyang Senior, Tarhata Maglangit, Ibrahim Ali, Susana Ayatin, Bayling Mantawil, Side Sheik, Abdul Wahab Pak, Bay Maleha Kandaw, Sitifahani Uyoyod, Mujib Abu, Tawakal Mitimbang, Dan Asnawi, Basit Abbas, Haron Abbas, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Rasul Ismail, Romeo Semah, Hasim Edilanggalen, and Ben Jamil Loong.
Mr. Speaker, at this point, we'd like to move that one of the principal authors, MP Frölin Mendoza, be given the floor, be recognized and given the floor.
Member of Parliament, Frölin Mendoza is recognized.
To our inferring Chief Minister, Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, Speaker of the Parliament, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, fellow colleagues in the Parliament, Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Mr. Speaker, in this afternoon's session, I would like to invite the attention of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority to the bill I introduce "Upgrading the South Upi Municipal Hospital in Magindanaw del Sur for ten-bed into fifty-bed capacity." For thirty years, the South Upi Municipal Hospital, Mr. Speaker, has been serving the people of South Upi and the nearby barangays of Upi-Magindanaw and Libaxultanco-Darat Province. However, since nineteen ninety-two and until now, the hospital authorized bed capacity is only ten-bed, with each corresponding staff complement and budgetary allocation. During the period twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-one, the bed occupancy rate of South Upi Municipal Hospital continued to increase at one-hundred-and-thirty-six percent to three-hundred-and-sixty-two percent as prescribed by the National Economic Development Authority. The hospital bed-to-population ratio should be one hospital per one thousand population. In the case of South Upi, Mr. Speaker, the ideal number of beds should be fifty, given its projected population of forty-nine thousand two-hundred-and-thirty in twenty-twenty-two. More than the long years of service provided by the South Upi Municipal Hospital, it has enjoyed the continued patronage of the surrounding and nearby communities. Moreover, the hospital personnel effectively communicate and have fostered amiable relations with the people in the communities, including indigenous peoples. In fact, Mr. Speaker, the hospital staff are able to communicate using the Teduray dialect, which is critically important, considering that more than seventy percent of the hospital patients are from the Teduray tribe. Mr. Speaker, upon the recommendation of Esther Espitalo, MDFPOG, the Medical Officer five, and Chief of Hospital of South Upi Municipal Hospital, this draft bill proposed to upgrade the existing South Upi Municipal Hospital of Magindanaw del Sur from ten-bed to fifty-bed capacity hospital. It also proposes to provide the necessary hospital space to accommodate the additional bed, equip the hospital with up-to-date medical and office equipment and facilities, and correspondingly increase the staff complement. When passed in tillow, Mr. Speaker, this bill will fulfill the mandate of the Bangsa Moro government to promote and protect the rights of indigenous people to access life-saving health services. It shall bring to life the Bangsa Moro government's policy of providing sufficient, appropriate, accessible, and affordable health services. The passage of this bill, Mr. Speaker, is strongly encouraged to realize the Bangsa Moro government commitment to the people in the Bangsa Moro and indigenous people, so that no one is left behind. In this connection, Mr. Speaker, please allow me to file this BTA Parliament Bill one-two-zero for the benefit of our people in the municipality of South Upi, province of Magindanaw del Sur. Fiobagi, mauyan.
Mr. Speaker, we now move to BTA Bill number two-two-five, and we'd like to ask, Mr. Speaker, the Secretariat.
Walang referral, no?
I'm sorry.
Yang una, diyan yata na refer, yang una.
Okay, I shall now move, Mr. Speaker, to refer BTA Bill number ten, the first one under the bills on second reading, to the Committee on Trade, Investments, and Tourism, and also to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion coming from the floor leader to refer BTA Bill, Parliament Bill number ten, the Committee on Trade, Industry, and Tourism, and BTA Parliament Bill one-two-zero to the Committee on.
Health and Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management.
Hang on here, Finance, Budget, and Management. Do I hear any second?
Mr. Speaker, just to be clear, for BTA Parliament Bill number ten, it's also to be jointly referred to CTIT and CFBM as well.
Yes. So, BTA Parliament ten is likewise referred to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. So, there is a motion coming from the floor leader. Any second? There is a motion to refer Parliament Bill number two, Parliament Bill number ten, to the Committee on CTIT, to the CTIT, and to the safety. You will see candid, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved. And to BTA Bill, Parliament Bill number one-two-zero, referred to the Committee on Health and to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. One-two-zero. You will see candid also, there being no objection, the same is likewise referred to.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Please speak now, Secretariat, but then referral of the two words.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now come to BTA Parliament Bill number two-two-five. We'd like to request the Secretariat to read the title of the bill, the name of the authors, as well as the co-authors, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please read the BTA Parliament Bill number two-two-five. Its title, "The Author and the Co-authors."
BTA Parliament Bill number two-hundred-and-twenty-five entitled "An Act Upgrading the Magindanaw Provincial Hospital to a Level Three Hospital, and thereby increasing its bed capacity to three-hundred-and-fifty, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes." Authors, Members of Parliament, Baintan Ampatuan, Kadeel Sinulinding Junior, Sitifahani and Sitifahani Uyoyod. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Rasol Mitmog Junior, Amil Bahar Mualil, Liza Alamiya, Soharto Amuluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasul Ismail, Khalid Haji Abdullah, Japara Pulo Mikael Matalam, Basir Utu, Tawakal Mitimbang, Paisal Karun, Susana Ayatin, Matarol Estino, Hasim Edilanggalen, Nur Reda Miswari, Ali Salik, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Frölin Mendoza, Mosberg Alauden, Hamid Malik, Dan Asnawi, Haron Abbas, Akmad Abbas, and Nabila Margarita Pangandaman.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize one of the principal authors, MP Baintan Ampatuan.
MP Baintan Ampatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, floor leader. Hindi na ito short ha? Kasi nag-short na kanina. I'm ready actually kanina pero I keep it short to give way to this equally important bill. Bismillah, Rahman Rahim, in the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful. It is my honor to sponsor this bill number two-two-five entitled "An Act Upgrading the Magindanaw Provincial Hospital or MPHS to a Level Three Hospital and thereby increasing the bed capacity to three-hundred-and-fifty, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes." Mr. Speaker, for every Bangsa Moro, health is a fundamental right. Everyone should have access to the medical services they require whenever and wherever they require them, without experiencing financial difficulty. In order to attain this right to health, each and every Bangsa Moro has to have access to outstanding healthcare services for their personal as well as the health of the families and communities. Mr. Speaker, the Philippines recognizes as one of its state policies stated under section five, article two of the nineteen eighty-seven constitution, that the state shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. In the Bangsa Moro region, section three, article five, Republic Act number eleven-zero-five-four, or the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, provides that as part of the general welfare of the people, the Bangsa Moro government shall ensure, support, and promote health and safety of its people. Furthermore, section twenty-two, article nine of the BOL provides that the Bangsa Moro government shall adopt a policy on health that provides for a comprehensive and integrated health service delivery for its constituents. It shall establish by law a general hospital system to serve the health requirements of its people and ensure that the individual basic right to life shall be attainable through the prompt intervention of excellent and affordable medical services. The Bangsa Moro government shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. It shall also uphold the people's right to have access to essential good health and other social services that promote their well-being. The Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region must strictly adhere to these state health policies as outlined in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law and in the Constitution. Mr. Speaker, the Magindanaw Provincial Hospital located in that Ofer Ampatuan-Magindanaw is a level-two hospital that has a two-hundred-and-ninety-nine bed capacity. It caters to the medical and health needs of the people of Magindanaw del Sur and the other nearby areas. The rapid growth of population in the region The rapid growth of population in the region being... being accommodated by the hospital with its present capacity and, uh, equipment understandably dictates the necessity of... of an upgraded, uh, a necessity of an upgrade... upgraded hospital to provide be... better health services and facilities. The upgrading must be coupled with the modernization of, uh, facilities that shall, um, relevantly and sufficiently address the issues inherent in its operations. Parallel to the rise, uh, of the population is the immediate demand where upgrading the Maguindanao Provincial Hospital from Level Two to Level Three classification with three hundred fifty bed capacity has become urgent. The Bangsa Moro government is mandated to protect, as, uh, earlier enunciated. Um, Mr. Speaker, um, based on conversation with the provincial health officer of, uh, the, uh, um, Maguindanao Provincial Hospital, they're actually operating right now. Uh, their capacity is already, uh, Level Three. However, Mr. Speaker, uh, it needs some legislation. And I think this is an answer to that, uh, a call coming from the uh, provincial hospital so that they can fully uh, operate as Level Three hospital. Uh, contrary to the other, uh, proposals that, uh, we need to allocate more resources, in this case, we just need to augment the current, um, uh, facilities, but, uh, their level is already at the level of Level Three, uh, facilities. So, um, it's just a matter of, uh, small augmentation coming from the Bangsa Moro government so that they can fully operate as Level Threes. With that, Mr. Speaker, I seek the, um, the currents and, uh, support of this chamber uh, for the immediate approval of this bill. Thank you very much. Wasalamualaikum. Marakmatullahi tala. Wabarakatuh.
Waalaikum shala. Marakmatullahi tala. Wabarakatuh. Floor leader. Referal. Re... referal.
Mr. Speaker, uh, we come to BTA Parliament Bill number three-three-six, which is a
Referal muna.
of the day. Ah, sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Referal muna.
For BTA Parliament Bill number two-two-five, I move that we refer the same to the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management.
BTA Bill Pa... uh, BTA Parliament Bill number two-two-five is move...
Is, uh... I move that we refer it, uh, jointly to the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management.
BTA Parliament Bill number two-two-five, uh, there is a motion to refer it to the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Yuli seconded, there being no objection, this same issue by approve.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to, um, defer the, and give ref... give the floor to, uh, another deputy floor leader, MP Joe Lorena.
MP Joe... MP Jose Lorena, you can take the floor.
Silla Rahman Rahim.
Yes.
Thank you. I would to suspend man.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Ten-minute suspension for the... to give it for the asan. Ten minutes is...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we are now in...
On agenda.
We are now in... Let's speak genders.
Bangsamoro Gender and Development Code.
Bangsamoro Gender, this is year number three three six, Mr. Speaker. The author, Mr. Speaker, is the government of the day. And I think they have identified a representative to deliver the...
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship speech in the person of the Minister of the SWD and deputy law leader, I said the jury. Mr. Speaker, of course, we want also to recognize that in our... of course, we want also to recognize that in our presence, we have the Chairman of the Commission on Women with us, Badon Karod, our former colleague.
The... The Chairperson of Bangsa Moro Women Commission? Thank you. She is a former colleague in the BTA One.
Yes.
She wants to witness the delivery of this landmark bill, Gender and Development Code.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Minister Raisa Jedyuri to introduce the bill, Bill 336.
Deputy Law Leader and Minister, Member of Parliament, Raisa Jedyuri is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Honorable Speaker, esteemed colleagues and fellow public servants, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. It is with great pride and deep responsibility that I stand before you today to deliver the sponsorship speech for Parliament Bill Number 336 or the Bangsa Moro Gender and Development Code on behalf of the government of the day. The proposed Bangsa Moro Gender and Development Code, if passed, will be a landmark legislation that embodies our shared commitment to a more inclusive, equitable and progressive Bangsa Moro autonomous region. With this legislation, women's empowerment and gender equality will become a reality in our communities and not just a dream. The Bangsa Moro Gender and Development Code is not merely a policy framework, but a reflection of a region's unique cultural and spiritual heritage. It is an innovative approach that strikes the balance between advancing gender equality while faithfully integrating the rich Islamic values that guide the moral compass of our society. Islam, as we all know, teaches the equality of women and men, recognizing that both are created from a single soul and are equal in dignity and worth. In this context, the Bangsa Moro God Code draws heavily from the principles of justice, compassion and respect for human dignity as espoused in the Quran and Sunnah. These values are the foundation upon which we build a framework that upholds the rights of women and men while ensuring harmony with our faith and traditions. The code is a product of comprehensive consultations led by the Bangsa Moro Women Commission or BWC. The BWC has played a pivotal role in crafting this legislation, ensuring that the voices of women across the Bangsa Moro are reflected in the code. The BWC has been instrumental in harmonizing Islamic teachings with international commitments such as the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women or Sido, aligning with global gender equity standards while ensuring that the code remains deeply rooted in our cultural identity. The BWC will also play a key role in implementing this code. It will ensure that the principles of gender mainstreaming and women's empowerment are integrated in all sectors of governance, public policy and community development. The BWC will lead the efforts to monitor the code's progress, ensuring that its provisions are translated into concrete programs and projects that uplift women and contribute to the overall development of the Bangsa Moro. It is also important to dispel the dangers and unfounded stereotypes that portray us, portray us Muslim and IP women as powerless and voiceless victims of a repressive religion and culture. The majority of Muslim countries, including ours, have in fact public commitments to advance women's rights. As a testament to that commitment, this God Code assures that Muslim and non-Moro IP women in the Bangsa Moro region are empowered and free to exercise their social, economic and political rights, contribute to their communities and thrive in all facets of society by upholding the dignity and agency of women in all aspects of their lives. The stereotype of Muslim and IP women as victims of our culture becomes especially harmful when it is institutionalized in policy and law, leading to discriminatory practices that deny women equal rights as citizens under the pretext of cultural or religious values. This code, however, does the opposite. It ensures that gender equality is enshrined within our governance system, empowering both men and women as equal partners to participate in the social, economic and political life of our region. Mr. Speaker, honorable colleagues, you must know that this legislation promotes a holistic view of development where gender equality is pursued not in isolation but in conjunction with our culture and values. The Bangsa Moro God Code seeks to protect women from violence, discrimination and exploitation while also promoting their empowerment through education, healthcare, political participation and economic opportunities, all in a manner that is faithful to our customs, to our ethics, to our Bangsa Moro way of life. Social protection is a key pillar of this code. It recognizes the need to support women in vulnerable situations such as those affected by conflict, single mothers, women with disabilities, women deprived of liberty, among others. By institutionalizing our proposed social safety nets, we are ensuring that every Bangsa Moro woman, regardless of her circumstances, can live with dignity and have access to the services and resources needed to improve her quality of life. Political empowerment is also central to this code. It underscores the active and direct participation of women in all levels of governance, policymaking and peacebuilding. The code ensures that women are given equal opportunities to lead, contribute and shape the future of the Bangsa Moro region. By promoting women's representation in governance and decision-making bodies, we are not just fulfilling a legal obligation. We are in fact upholding the Islamic principle of equality and justice. On the economic front, the Bangsa Moro God Code promotes women's economic empowerment by ensuring access to livelihood programs, financial resources and entrepreneurial opportunities. Women have long played a crucial role in our local economies and this code strengthens that role by creating a supportive environment where women can thrive economically, contributing to the prosperity of their families and communities. It also ensures equal pay and fair treatment in the workplace. Key provisions of this code such as protection of women's rights in marriage and family relations, the recognition of women's economic contributions and the establishment of safe spaces for women are aligned with the Islamic principles of justice or Adil and responsibility or Amanah. Moreover, the code incorporates fatwas on women's health and reproductive rights, ensuring that religious guidance is harmonized with the broader goals of gender empowerment. The Bangsa Moro God Code also promotes a gender-responsive approach to peacebuilding, nationbuilding and conflict resolution, recognizing the important role that women play in fostering peace and stability within our communities. And that is why women's effective participation in the governance processes and decision-making at all levels is crucial when it comes to sustaining peace in the context of post-conflict reconstruction of the Bangsa Moro region. In this regard, Mr. Speaker, the code reinforces our commitment to women, peace and security or WPS, drawing inspiration from both Islamic teachings and international frameworks like the UN SCR 1325. In addition, the code ensures that gender-responsive budgeting is institutionalized, ensuring that public funds are allocated effectively to promote gender mainstreaming of our policies, plans and programs. We hope that by incorporating our values into our budgetary processes, we will be able to develop programs that will empower women as well as enrich the moral and social values of the Bangsa Moro society. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, I believe that gender equality, particularly within the framework of the Bangsa Moro, is something that we as a body, something that each one of us in this parliament deserves. It is about understanding that the ability to support women, protect their rights and encourage their active participation in society are deeply aligned with the core tenets of Islam, justice, fairness and mutual respect. This is not only about complying with the legal requirements, but a social responsibility that we, the Bangsa Moro people, must undertake for ourselves. It is now time to go forward in unison with direction and in securing the passage of this historic piece of legislation which is a model of Islamic principles that can be applied in modern processes of governance, gender and development. Therefore, I earnestly appeal for your support in the passage of this code. It is the government of the day's wish to push forward this policy wherein we will collectively advance the cause of gender equity while at the same time fostering a gender-sensitive culture. With this, we will be able to realize our dreams of the Bangsa Moro region with its people, free from violence and aiming towards progress with equal opportunities given to both men and women to chart our collective destiny. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, this is the sponsorship speech I delivered in behalf of Attorney Shia Elijah Dumama Alba as representative of the government of the day. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we repair Parliament Bill 336 entitled the Bangsa Moro Gender and Development Code. The Committees of Women, Youth, Children and PWD add to the Committee on Finance as it might entail some budgetary requirements, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to repair to the Committee on Women etc. and to the Committee on Finance Budget and Management.
Mr. Speaker, I...
The juristic hand that there being no objection, the same is where from.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg leave that I have to repair back the floor to manage the processes in the floor to Deputy Law Leader, Raisa Jedyuri.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now move to item number 10, covering resolutions referred to the different committees. Item number one, Mr. Speaker, we ask for it's deferment to another day.
Item number one, Committee Report Number 52.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Committee Report Number 52 is deferred. Any objection? There being no objection, the same is by deferred.
Mr. Speaker, we move to Committee Report Number 87, Mr. Speaker. This would cover proposed Resolution 578. We'd like to ask the Secretariat to read the title of the resolution covered by the Committee Report, its author and co-authors, Mr. Speaker.
Is the principal author present? Committee Report Number 578.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. MP Jamila Ramos, as Chair of the committee to which the committee, the proposed resolution was referred, is present and ready to give the committee sponsorship speech.
About the principal author, is he present also?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, you can proceed. Committee... On the deck now is Committee Report Number 87. The Secretariat is directed to read Committee Report Number 87.
Committee Report Number 87 submitted by the Committee on Women, Youth, Children and Persons with Disabilities and proposed Resolution Number 578 entitled Resolution Encouraging the Ministries, Agencies and Offices in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw to establish childminding centers within the workplace or in accessible locations to the workplace. Author, Member of Parliament, Abdullah Hasim. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Abdullah Gayak, Said Shaikh, Ali Montaha Babau, Abdulaziz Aminudin, Ali Salik, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Basit Abbas Nabiltan, Dan Asnawi, Lanang Ali Junior, Matarol Estino, Abdul Wahab Pak, Tawakal Mitimbang, Den Martin Kahalan, Susana Anayatin, Bay Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mitimbang, Mujib Abu, Don Mustafa Loong, Jamel Makakuwa, Ali Sulaiman, Romeo Sema, Nurre Damiswari, Suarto Ismael, Hamid Malik, Ahmad Abbas, Eddie Ali, Randolph Arcasio, Ibrahim Ali, Harun Abbas, Mosber Alaudin, Hatimil Hassan, Kadel Sinulindik Junior, Jamila Ramos, Faisal Karon and Tarhata Maglangit.
Lord Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chair of the Committee on Women, Youth, Children and Persons with Disabilities, MP Jamila Ramos.
The Chair of the Committee on Women, Family, PWD, Youth...
Youth, Children and PWD.
PWD is recognized. Member of Parliament, Jamila Ramos.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Aldo Bilahim Nasyitani Rachim, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Sa ating Butihin Chief Minister, Ahudbalawag Ibrahim. Sa ating Parliament Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong. Sa ating mga opisyalas ng BTA Parliament, mga panauhin, mga tagabusubaybay ng ating live sessions. Magadang hapon po. Noong nakaraang ika dalawang putwalo ng Agosto 2024, ang Committee on Women, Youth, Children and Persons with Disabilities ay nagkaroon ng committed deliberation kung saan ay salang ang proposed Resolution Number 578. At alhamdulillah, ito po ay naaprobahan sa Committee na walang amendments. We are therefore submitting Committee Report Number 87, approving without amendments, proposed Resolution Number 578 or Resolution Encouraging the Ministries, Agencies and Offices in Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw to establish childminding centers within the workplace or in accessible locations to the workplace. Sapagkatong ito, gusto nating acknowledge ang good proponent, ang principal author, MP Abdullah Hasim. Gayon din ang mga co-authors ito. MP Abdullah Gayak, MP Said Shaikh, MP Ali Montaha Babau, MP Abdul Aziz Aminudin, MP Ali Salik, MP Muhammad Kelly Antao, MP Basit Abbas, MP Nabiltan, MP Dan Asnawi, MP Lanang Ali Junior, MP Matarol Estino, MP Abdul Wahab Pak, MP Tawakal Mitimbang, MP Den Martin Kahalan, MP Susana Anayatin, MP Bay Maleha Kandaw, MP Michael Mitimbang, MP Mujib Abu, MP Don Mustafa Loong, MP Jamel Makakuwa, MP Ali Sulaiman, MP Romeo Sema, MP Nurre Damiswari and MP Suarto Ismael. Mrs. Speaker, na isko pong bigyang diin, ang resolusyon ito ay hinihikayat ang mga ahensya ng ating pamahalang Bangsa Moro na magtatag ng childminding centers o pasilidad na siyang magbabantay at magbibigay tugon sa mga pangangailangan ng mga anak ng ating mga empleyado, lalong-lalo na ang mga solo parents habang sila ay nagtatrabaho. Nauunawaan natin ang mga hamon na kinakaharap ng mga magulang, lalo na ang mga solo parents at mga ina na natatrabaho. Madalas, wala silang mapagiiwanan ang kanilang mga anak. Kaya nagiging mahirap para sa kanila na magampanan ng mabuti ang kanilang mga tungkulin bilang empleyado o kawani ng gobyerno. Ang pagkakaroon ng childminding centers ng ating bar ministries, agencies and offices, ang nakikita nating solusyon dito. Alhamdulillah at may raon na pong batas para rito. Ang kailangan lang po nating gawin ay ipatupad ito at supotahan ang ating mga solo parents at mga magulang nagtatrabaho na mayroong anak ng edad ay pitopababa. Sa pamamagitan ito, matutulungan natin sila makapagtrabaho ng walang alinlangan at buo. Ang kumpiansa sa kanilang mga anak ay bababantayan at maalagaan ng mabuti. Mrs. Speaker, ito pong paghihikayat natin na makapagtatag ng childminding centers ay hindi lamang makakatulong sa ating mga manggagawa. Mrs. Speaker, ito pong paghihikayat natin na makapagtatag ng childminding centers ay hindi lamang makakatulong sa ating mga manggagawa at sa kanilang mga pani- pamilya kundi magdudulot din ito ng positibong epekto sa kalidad ng kanilang trabaho. Kapag alam ng mga magulang na nasa ligtas at maayos na kalagayan ang kanilang mga anak, mas makakapagfocus sila sa kanilang gawain. Ibig sabihin ito, mas kaunti ang magiging absenses, mas mataas ang produktibidad, at mas maayos ang serbisyo publiko ang magbibigay ng, ang may bibigay ng ating mga manggagawa. In this way, Mrs. Speaker, we can foster the commitment of the Bangsa Moro government towards promoting full employment opportunities in farm while upholding gender responsiveness and ensuring childcare protection and services, fostering a more inclusive and progressive region for all. It is in this premise, Mrs. Speaker, that I humbly urge this August body to adopt Committee Report Number Eighty Seven and approve proposed resolution number five seven eight. Together, we can provide care for all Bangsa Moro families, especially for the solo parents, mothers, and children. Maraming salamat po, Mrs. Speaker. Wa billahi, taufik, wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh. Kasama ko po ngayon, nadidepensa ng committee report na ito, ang ating Butihing Proponent, MP Abdullah Hasim. Para sa ibang mga, ilang mga katanungan, Mrs. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt Committee Report Number Eighty Seven, uh, for deliberation and...
There is, there is a motion to adopt Committee Report Number Eighty Seven. Judiciary candidate, there being no objection, this aim is issued by approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Period of interpolation is open?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize, uh, Deputy Floor Leader, uh, Hosselo Reno.
Deputy Floor Leader, Lorena is recognized. Do you move for its approval? I have la- clarification. I thought you were going to move for its approval.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Floor Leader. While I am convinced that there is a need for that, but, Mr. Speaker, I want to have some sense before we act on the approval of this particular resolution. Uh, may we know from the committee or from the author if there is a study or a survey which will indicate how many solo parents do we have in the farm?
The proponent may answer? The inquiry of, uh, Member of Parliament Lorena?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamu'alaikum warasulilang abhat. Wassalamualaikum. Um, we tried to obtain, uh, Mrs. Speaker, uh, data regarding to the query of the, uh, good MP. And, uh, yung, uh, office po na tinawagan namin is, uh, we are still awaiting the reply. Yes, thank you po.
Uh, absent that data, do we have a projection as to how many centers to reopen or farm, considering the number of agencies, G O C Cs, and other public institutions we have? Do you have a projection?
Uh, thank you, Miss, uh, um, may I answer, Miss Speaker?
Yes, uh, you are right.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Um, yung inisip po natin dito, Mrs. Speaker, is, uh, per office po 'yung pagimplemente ito, actually, uh, doon sa God, the budget, nung bawat officer allocation, uh, at, um, depende sa office, kung paano po nila, uh, kumbaga alam nila 'yung mga tao nila, kung ilan 'yung, uh, kumbaga mga, maki cater nung, or makakabenefit sa, uh, proposal na ito. So depende po talaga sa kanila. Actually, um, dito po sa farm, as far as we know, uh, may, alam po natin na meron sa, uh, Kotabato City Hall, meron po doon silang, uh, childminding center at, uh, manned by a social, uh, worker. So, yun po, and here in, uh, or, um, uh, dito po sa BGC, uh, sa, sa dating arm, meron pong childminding center. Pero nung, uh, dahil po nung pagdami ng mga offices, parang, I think, if I'm not mistaken, is the library na naoccupy po nila 'yung space. So as for nawala po, uh, sa ngayon. Thank you.
Yes, uh, 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 eh, po, with the indulgence of the, uh, the one questioning, uh, Floor Leader, this is a resolution encouraging the ministries and offices to establish, uh, childminding centers. So, the resolution in the purpose to encourage all the ministries and offices within the farm. Okay, you may answer the Chair of the Committee.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, if I may just add, doon po sa shiniere ng ating Butihing Proponent, uh, dito po sa farm ay, meron din po ang MSSD, uh, Provi- Magindano Provincial Social Service Office, kung saan meron po silang, uh, childminding center. Ang alam ko po, under repair po ito, pero, but still, uh, tumatanggap sila ng mga children below seven years, no? Uh, that are being taken cared of by, uh, by the center. At, uh, maidagdag ko din, sa aming pong pananaliksik ay, ang Ministry of Health, uh, particularly ang Population Division, ay, uh, binisita po ng ating tanggapan at napagalaman natin na itong March two thousand twenty-four lang ay nagkaroon din sila ng childminding corner, not a center. At, uh, maganda po 'yung naging takbo ng kanilang, uh, uh, corner, bagamat ito'y maliit lamang. Uh, ito ay, um, nakareceive ng magandang feedback, no? Dahil mas naging productive 'yung mga, uh, empleyado, no? Na, uh, they see, they get to see their, uh, children while they are on, uh, work, no? At, uh, nagpa-plano po ito na ito ay expand nila into a full childminding center na merong, um, uh, breastfeeding, uh, sector, at meron din itong pediatric clinic. So ito, ito ay isang magandang, uh, step na nakikita natin dahil, uh, kung atin pong titignan, meron po talagang national law tayo na pinagbabasihan dito. Ito ay 'yung Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act. Kung saan ay ine-encourage dito ang mga, lahat ng mga ahensya ng gobyerno na mag-establish ng childminding centers. Hindi po siya mandatory sa batas. Ito po ay, uh, voluntary, uh, lalo na doon sa mga opisina na merong tat- uh, sa gobyerno na merong mahigit tatlong daang empleyado. At doon naman sa mga private, uh, employers ay doon sa merong may mga higit dalawang daang empleyado, Mrs. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Uh, but pardon my ignorance, uh, how do you describe a childminding center? What are the activities done in that center? How big is the center?
Yes, uh, thank you, Miss Speaker. Um, so, 'yung childminding center po, uh, my definition po sa, uh, IRR, nung, uh, RA eleven eight six one, it refers to a facility or an area within the workplace or in accessible locations to the solo parent or workplace of the guardian provided by the employer, where the solo parent employee's child, children, or dependents who are aged seven years old and below is, uh, are or are habitually received for purposes of care and supervision during working hours.
Again, uh, since the resolution encourages, necessarily, there is a need for budget to be done by agencies to cater to this facility. Now, my question is, is my understanding correct that you will leave it, it's in every agency to come out with a program, but there is no standard for its, uh, childminding, uh, facility? Do, do you allow the agency to come with a bigger one, small one, medium size, big size, the exercise, or you will cap out with a canalized center so that the, the budget to be given to the agencies are uniform?
Um, Mrs. Speaker, uh, siguro we leave it to the agencies. Dependepo sa mga, sa kailangan nila, and ito naman ay, uh, just encouraging them. And, uh, also, uh, hoping na, um, ma- makasu- ma- makasuporta sa moral governance initiative ng ating Chief Minister na 'yung mga, uh, offices na meron naman silang agad allocation ay baka makalagay sila ng childminding center. Kung, um, uh, kung makikita nila doon sa mga empleyado nila na magbe-benefit, uh, 'yung mga, uh, employees nila po, uh, doon, Mr. Chair. So, as for the question po is, uh, siguro mas maganda is, depende talaga po sa needs nung office, kung malaki or maliit. Dependepo dun sa, din sa pangangailangan ng kanilang mga employees. Then, dahil magaiba-iba po 'yung, uh, demographics ng bawat employees ng isang office.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Why I support the idea of protecting the rights of children the women? My only, by way of manifestation, my only, uh, concern is that the budgeting of this center might not be uniform to all. And if we do not set standard, it might, might be abused. And I hope, uh, this can be looked into by our, in the budgeting process so that it cannot be used. Because centers might become white elephants if it is not fully utilized. So that is just a concern that we have to look as, Members of the Parliament, we have to see to it that budget allocation purposes intended should not go to waste and to other activities outside from the focus for which the resolution is intended. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, uh, for that, uh, actually, this, this reso- this is only a resolution in support of, uh, Republic Act eleven eight six one. Uh, but on the, how, how do we go small or medium size of the center is depends on the judgment, judgment of the head of office.
Yeah. If I may just also add, uh, su- supply to that information which is mentioned, there is actually no law or any administrative order na nagbibigay po ng specific structure para si isang childminding center. So, pwede pong maging flexible tayo doon, katulad ng nabanggit ng ating Butihing Proponent. Pero, ang isang tinitignan po natin na pwedeng maging standard po natin ay tulad na lamang halimbawa ng ginawa ng, uh, Department of Social Welfare and Development sa national, doon sa accreditation nila. Meron lang silang nilagay doon na standard, like for example, it should be with, uh, the physical environment and, uh, safety standard na, which, uh, gives importance to, uh, child friendliness, no, ng, uh, location, 'yung indoor and outdoor environments of the center, and the ensuring quality and safety measures that are critical in protecting and promoting children's holistic development, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, uh, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker Liza Alamiya.
Deputy Speaker Liza Alamiya, Liza Alamiya is recognized.
Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi barakatu. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Madam Floor Leader. Um, I had to stand here, Ma- Mr. Speaker, because I have some, uh, questions and some concerns with respect to, uh, this resolution and the childminding centers. My first question is, uh, would the proponents know how many from among the more than thirty-six thousand employees in the farm are solo parents?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Uh, tulad po nung nasabi ko kanina, Mr. Speaker, uh, we tried to obtain the data from an office po. Pero, waiting pa po talaga kami for the, um, uh, data. So, uh, we decided na, uh, since, uh, this is en- encouraging naman, uh, to, uh, yeah, uh, isagawa 'yung batas, which is, in itself, 'yung batas is also encouraging, hindi naman po mandatory. So, hindi na po namin nahiintay 'yung data po. Thank you.
Okay, so, this, uh, resolution is, uh, encourages, uh, attempts to encourage all government agencies and private establishments in the farm to set up childminding centers. But, uh, it's not only for solo parents, uh, am, am I correct in that assumption?
Um, although, yun po 'yung focus nung batas, 'yung solo parents, hindi naman po, uh, limited doon sa kanila, kung sino po 'yung, kailangan po nila in their situation, no? Uh, and, uh, ang isa pa po is, even 'yung mga, uh, clients or beneficia, uh, 'yung mga, uh, taong bayan napupunta po sa mga opisina, ay pwede nila actually mayutilize din 'yung childminding centers. And, uh, sa research po na aming mga staff, is actually in City Hall of Kotabato City ay nangyayari po yun madalas. 'Yung mga pupunta sa City Hall na meron silang mga anak, na meron silang kailangan City Hall, minsan iniiwan nila doon sa childminding center. At, uh, meron po dong nakaantabay na social worker at mga manggagawa na, yun po 'yung kanilang expertise, 'yung, uh, pag, uh, childminding po.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, so, um, actually, I agree with the resolution, with the whole intent of the resolution. Uh, we just need to more or less try to clarify so that the ministries and agencies and private establishments will be receiving this resolution or would learn about this resolution, uh, would be guided. So is there an example of, uh, some guidelines with respect to how a ministry or an agency would be setting up a child, uh, minding center outside the farm? On how they do it, when it comes to, for example, uh, first and foremost is budgeting what are needed in the childminding center? Um, is there prioritization, like the priority should be first, the solo parents, uh, which can be a man or a woman, so, because there are fathers who are not married or who are widowers but with, uh, children below seven years old. Or, um, would, considering what was stated earlier, will this be expanded also to the public who would be visiting the area? How different would it be to a children's center that is already being operated by, uh, MSSD or DSWD or some LGUs?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. When we look into the law, the, uh, Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act, the intent of the law is for primarily for the children of solo parents employees. However, it is not limited there. It can, uh, also, uh, other employees, uh, their children can also avail of the childminding centers. Yun po 'yung difference niya sa regular, let's say, daycare center. Ito po ay dapat ay within the workplace lang, or malapit lang doon sa workplace na pinagtatrabuhuan ng kanilang parents. Ang ganoon ay closely nasusupervised, namomonitor po nila ang kanilang mga anak. Ang sa gayon ay hindi sila mag-alala, no, sa kapakanan, no, ng kanilang mga anak habang sila ay nagtatrabaho, Mrs. Speaker.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So in other words, when this resolution is passed, um, it becomes, although this only encourages, uh, ministries, agencies, and offices, it doesn't talk about private establishment, just the government agencies within the farm to establish mind, childminding centers, then all of these ministries, offices, and agencies may actually include in their budget proposal? For example, for BEP two thousand twenty-five, the setting up of a childminding center? Uh, yes or no?
Uh, I agree, Mrs. Speaker, that the ministries, uh, can include in their budget. Uh, uh, that is actually what is also, uh, in the law, that it should be included in the General Appropriations Act, no, the budget. Uh, but at the same time, pwede rin din po nilang mayutilize 'yung agad budget, no, para pagkuhanan itong, uh, pondo para dito. And, uh, the, the ministries can also augment, uh, with, uh, a partner's support, no, uh, especially from non-government organizations, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would, I wanted that spoken out and put into the record so that the ministries, agencies, and offices would be guided with respect to how to do, to do this actually. And that in the farm, what we are encouraging is for the public offices to set up, the government offices to set this up, uh, and not get the private establishments. So in effect, it is an implementation of the law on the Solo Parents Act. Uh, my last question is, it talks about the childminding center, but it does not, the center does not mean that it is a building. It can actually be just a room. Uh, am, uh, am I correct in this assumptions?
Yes.
Uh, yes po, Mr. Speaker. Uh, tulad 'yung nasabi ko po kanina is, depende po talaga doon sa opisina. So, eh, kung yun lang po 'yung available, ano, it could be a, a space, a room, or depende po if, uh, malaki or maliit.
Okay. And Mister Speaker, it can also be a childminding center or room or space. At the same time, a breastfeeding area with an area where there is privacy for breastfeeding for children, uh, for still breastfeeding, Mister Speaker.
Kung yun po ang gagawin nila, Mister Speaker, mas, mas, ma- much better po. And, uh, if I remember correctly, you've already passed a resolution encouraging 'yung breastfeeding po dito sa BARM. So, mas maganda po if yun ang gagawin nila.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. That means it ties up very well to the previous resolution, uh, on breastfeeding. So with that, Mister Speaker, I end my, uh, interpolation. Uh, I support this resolution and we hope that the ministries, offices, and agencies in the BARM will actually do this. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much. Ang problema lang yata 'yung medyo respect 'yung data, 'yung ilan ang solo parents. Kasi because of power culture, 'yung iba nililihim niya na solo parents siya. So, 'yung data lang problema. Sige, Floor Leader.
Yes, Mister Speaker, if I can give some input on that matter, Mister Speaker. Local government units are mandated to issue solo parent IDs.
Okay.
Uh, considering that there are benefits that should be provided to solo parents. But the registration, uh, for solo parents, uh, is still ongoing and not all LGUs are able to provide that as with the correct number.
Hindi pa kompletang data, no?
Hindi pa po.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. I think that ends the interpolation.
No, no interpolator.
There are no other interpolators. I move that we close the period of interpolation, Mister Speaker.
There is a, uh, motion to close the period of interpolation, no? Jurisprisident, there being no objection, the same is by approved.
And Mister Speaker, I don't think there is any proposed amendment to the, uh, proposed resolution. And therefore, uh, Mister Speaker, I move that we open and terminate the period of amendments.
There is a twin motion to open and close the period of amendments. Jurisprisident, there being no objection, the same is by approved.
Considering that there are no, uh, proposed amendments, Mister Speaker, I move that we approve, uh, proposed Resolution 578.
There is a motion to approve proposed Resolution Number 578 without amendments. Jurisprisident, there being no objection, the same is by approved.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, we now move to Committee Report Number 88. This comes from the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education and jointly with the Committee on Bangsa-Moro Justice System. This covers Proposed Resolution Number 633. Mister Speaker, we'd like to ask the Secretariat to read the title of the proposed resolution as well as the names of the authors and co-authors of the same.
Yes, Secretariat is so directed.
Committee Report Number 88, submitted by the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education and Committee on Bangsa-Moro Justice System. Rep. Proposed Resolution Number 633 entitled, "A Resolution Expressing Strong Support for the Mindanao State University College of Law to Continue Providing Quality Legal Education for the Bangsa-Moro People." Authors, Members of Parliament, Marjani Makasalong, Eddie Ali, Susana Niatin, Ramon Piang Senior, Ahmad Abbas, Haron Abbas, Mosbir Alaudin, Ibrahim Ali, Abdullah Sisaminudin, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Tarhata Maglangit, Chaparapolo Mikael Matalam, Ali Salik, Sid Sheikh, Sitifany Uyooyot, Muhammad Yakub, Hatimil Hassan, Abdullah Gayak, John Anthony Lim, and Rasol Mitmug Jr. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Jose Muñoz, Romeo Semma, Men Ali, Sankey.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize MP Eddie Ali, the Chair of the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education, for, uh, the sponsorship speech.
Member of Parliament, Eddie Ali is recognized for the sponsorship speech.
Sorry, Mister Speaker, it's for the presentation or the rendering of the Committee Report, uh, Committee Report Number 88.
Yes, for the Committee Report.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, Madam Floor Leader. Mister Speaker, the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Bangsa-Moro Justice System have the honor to report back to this Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority. BTA Proposed Resolution Number 633 entitled, "A Resolution Expressing Support to the Mindanao State University College of Law in Its Fight to Continue Providing Legal Education for the Bangsa-Moro." Authored, MP Marjani Makasalong and yours truly. The proposed resolution was filed last thirteen September 2024 at the Office of Secretary General. It was discussed in the plenary session last nineteen September 2024. And on the same day, the said resolution was referred to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Bangsa-Moro Justice System. Due to its urgency, both committees conducted a joint committee meeting last twenty-six September 2024 at the Committee Conference Room, Karumba Building, Jupiter Street, RH9, Cotabato City, to discuss the proposed resolution. After a thorough discussion, both committees proposed the following amendments to the proposed resolution. The title of the proposed resolution will be, is amended as follows. From, there is, uh, the filed resolution, "A Resolution Expressing Support to the Mindanao State University College of Law in Its Fight to Continue Providing Legal Education for the Bangsa-Moros." Amended to "A Resolution Expressing Strong Support for the Mindanao State University College of Law to Continue Providing Quality Legal Education for the Bangsa-Moro People." Second, the first were as close, was expanded and amended as follows. Well as the Congress of the Philippines in nineteen fifty-five enacted the Charter of the Mindanao State University, the Republic Act Number 1387, as amended. Well as Republic Act Number 1387, as amended, also known as the Charter of the Mindanao State University, MSU, was enacted by the, by the Congress of the Philippines in nineteen fifty-five, mandating under Section 6B, Section 6, Paragraph B thereof, the creation of the College of Law by the MSU Board of Regents as part of the university's mission to provide higher education in the region. The second and third well as clauses were consolidated into one clause. Shall read as follows. Well as pursuant to the, to this mandate, in nineteen eighty-one, the MSU Board of Regents formally established the MSU College of Law, which has since become a vital institution for legal education in Mindanao and the Bangsa-Moro, producing highly qualified lawyers committed to serving the region and the country. Fourth, additional well as clause, additional clauses were also added to further enhance the facts of the resolution. These clauses will be the new third and fourth well asses, well as clauses of the resolution. The additional well as clause, clauses shall read as follows. The new third well as clause, whereas Republic Act Number 7662, otherwise known as the Legal Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, created the Legal Education Board, LEB, and transferred, and transferred the regulatory and supervisory function of the legal education from the Department of Education, Culture, and Sports Dex to delete under Section 12 of the said act. New, uh, fourth well as clause, well as Section 12 of Republic Act Number 7662 explicitly provides that the law shall apply to all schools and colleges, and colleges of law under the supervision of the Department of Education, Culture, and Sports at the same time of each enactment. The fourth well as clause was retained and became the fifth well as clause of the amended, uh, proposed resolution. Sixth, additional well as clause was also added to further enhance the facts of the resolution. This clause will be the new sixth, the new sixth well as clause of the resolution, which read as follows. Well as, the legislative intent behind Republic Act Number 7662 as reflected in the Senate Committee Report Number Thirty-two of the Committee on Education, Arts, and Culture dated November eleven nineteen ninety-two, and minutes of the amendments and interpolation dated October five nineteen ninety-three on Senate Bill Number One Hundred, shows this, that the state universities and colleges, which have their own charters, are not covered by the said law. Seventh, the fifth well as clause of the resolution that was originally filed was retained and became the new seventh well as clause. The sixth well as clause was amended and was placed as the eighth well as clause. The amended clause shall be, shall be read as follows. Well as, the LED issued Resolution Number 231-18, canceling the accreditation of the law program of the MSU College of Law and ordering the closure of each program in all its campuses effective academic year 2025-2026, citing non-compliance with the LED requirements. Ninth, the seventh and eighth well as clauses were retained and were placed as the new ninth and tenth well as clauses respectively. An additional and final well as clause was introduced by both committees. The new eleventh well as clause shall read as follows. Well as, the Parliament recognizes the importance of preserving and protecting the MSU College of Law's continued operation in the detrimental effect and the, and the detrimental impact that the closure of each law program would have on the region's legal and socioeconomic landscape. Eleventh, the first resu- result, resolved clause amended as follows. Now therefore, as it is held by resolve, now therefore, as it is held by resolve, that the Bangsa-Moro Parliament expresses its strong support. May kulang yata ito. Now therefore, be it resolved, as it is held by resolve, that the Bangsa-Moro Parliament expresses its strong support for the Mindanao State University College of Law to continue, to continue providing quality legal education for the Bangsa-Moro people. And the last resolved clause is amended, ay, ito palang, is amended as follows. Be it, be it filed or resolved, let copies of this resolution be furnished to the Supreme Court of the Philippines, Senate of the Philippines, House of Representatives, Legal Education Board, and MSU Board of Regents. Before the approval of the resolution, jailperson Eddie Ali, uh, moved during the joint committee meeting that all present members of both committees be made authors of the proposed resolution. Finally, that the committees finding, that the committees finding a merit, a merit to the, to the, to the resolution, unanimously approved the proposed resolution and it be submitted to the Parliament for its final disposal. Mister Speaker, considering the import of the resolution, I appeal to my fellow colleagues in this August party to adopt Committee Report Resolution Number 88 to approve BTA Parliament, uh, Resolution Number 633. Mister Speaker, may I move to allow the primary author, MP Marjani Makasalong, to deliver his sponsorship speech?
MP Sultan Marjani Makasalong, the incoming period, uh, yari ka ulang sir.
Sige, mangampanya ka na. Audzubillah imina shaitanirajim, bismillahirrahmanirrahim, ahmaduka rabbih hamdanhamidin, panashkuru kashukran shakirin, ashedualla ilaa illallah wahdahula sharikala, washiduanna muhammadan abduhu warasulu. Ammaabad, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh, and a very good afternoon. Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leaders, esteemed colleagues, staff, and distinguished guests in the gallery. Once again, salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Before I proceed, I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to this esteemed Parliament for recognizing the urgency of our proposed Resolution Number 633 for the resolution expressing support to the Mindanao State University College of Law in its fight to continue providing legal education for the Bangsa-Moro. I also wish to thank the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education and the Bangsa-Moro Justice System for the joint committee meeting conducted on September twenty-sixth, ensuring that we are able to address this matter today. Additionally, I deeply appreciate the manifestation of our colleagues who have joined us in pushing for this important legislation. Allow me to quote from the official statement of Mindanao State University released on September seven, two thousand twenty-four in response to the recent resolution from the Legal Education Board. And I quote, "Now, LED threatens to cut off the access of Muslim Mindanao's youth to legal education. What it desires for MSU is to stop producing Bangsa-Moro lawyers and lawyers from other cultural minorities of Minsupala. MSU will not allow this to happen, as it will wreak havoc in Muslim Mindanao and destroy the gains of MSU's decades of peace-building in the discharge of its triology of functions of instruction, research, and extension." Mister Speaker, this is not just a statement. It is a reality we must confront together because MSU College of Law is now under threat. That is why this resolution goes beyond the mere existence of an academic institution. It is about safeguarding the future of legal education in the Bangsa-Moro. The Mindanao State University College of Law, founded in nineteen eighty-one under Republic Act Number 1387, has been instrumental in producing legal professionals, not only in Mindanao, but throughout the entire country. Graduates of MSU have made significant contributions to our legal system, advocating for justice and upholding the rule of law with the utmost integrity. For the Bangsa-Moro, the MSU College of Law holds even greater significance. It has produced lawyers who have played fundamental roles in establishment and governance of the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao or BARM. From negotiating peace agreements to drafting essential legislation in the Bangsa-Moro Parliament, these legal professionals have been vital to our progress. However, we now face a critical juncture. The Legal Education Board, through Resolution Number 231-18, has mandated the closure of MSU College of Law starting in the academic year two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six. This decision will have far-reaching and detrimental effects, particularly for underprivileged Bangsa-Moro students for whom this institution represents the only accessible path to legal education. Its closure threatens to diminish opportunities for aspiring lawyers and jeopardizes the very foundation of our legal and governance system in BARM. The Legal Education Board's decision is a direct threat to the progress we have made, and we cannot sit idly while access to legal education and we cannot sit idly while access to legal education is being stripped away from the Bangsamoro. The necessity for legal practitioners in the Bangsamoro region is more pronounced now than ever. Professionals who are not only well-versed in Philippine laws but also possess expertise in Islamic personal laws as well as an appreciation for the distinct historical, cultural and legal context of our region. The MSU College of Law has been instrumental in training attorneys who are adept at navigating these complexities, thereby playing a crucial role in upholding the stability and legal integrity of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Consequently, the closure of this significant institution cannot be permitted. We urge the Legal Education Board to reconsider its decision and recognize the vital role that MSU College of Law has played and continues to play in the Bangsamoro. As of September 25, the MSU Board of Regents has taken the decisive step to filing a petition with the Supreme Court to challenge the constitutionality of the Legal Education Boards or Lib regulatory authority over state-owned uncharted law schools. In this regard, we as member of Parliament must urge the government of the day to intervene by submitting a petition for intervention as the BARM is an interested party in ensuring the continued operation of the MSU College of Law. The Bangsamoro Organic Law contains a provision that mandates the national government to continue supporting MSU. Moreover, the MSU College of Law plays a crucial role in establishing the Sharia justice system and rectifying the historical injustices faced by the Bangsamoro. This petition is not only legal measure but the defense of the right to access education for our Bangsamoro youth, especially those from marginalized sectors. By approving this resolution today, Mister Speaker, we are not only standing with MSU but also affirming our commitment to the future of the Bangsamoro. The petition before the Supreme Court is a crucial battle and we must support MSU in its fight to preserve its existence. We must act swiftly to ensure that MSU College of Law continues to serve as a pillar of justice, equity and opportunity for the generations to come. Thank you and may Allah guide us always. Wa billahi taufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Wa Barakatuh.
Wa barakatuh.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt Committee Report Number 88 for further deliberation.
Uh there is a motion to adopt Committee Report Number 88. July 600. Uh there being no objection, this is by approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation. July 600. There being no objection, this is by approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize MP Bayintanang Patuan for her uh interpolation.
MP Bayintanang Patuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, floor leader. At the outset, allow me to categorically uh state that I fully support the continuation of the College of Law of the Mindanao State University and anything that we could help um in order to continue the education, college of law education in MSU, we will do it. But as a matter of uh uh clarifying some of the provisions uh as uh um included in the resolution, because I am not a lawyer, um I want to look at it on the perspective of a layman and the technical person at that. Okay, Mister Speaker, um would the good proponent allow me some clarity-catory questions?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um may I know, Mister Speaker, what Republic Act created the Mindanao State University?
Republic Act Number 1387, as amended.
As amended, um by what Republic Acts?
Wala na. Alam mo ano? 1387? 1387, yeah.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended. We don't know what the amendment.
But the last amendment I know was during the time of uh President Corazon Aquino during the Revolutionary Government.
When it becomes a system.
When it became.
Because uh because it is the Mindanao State University system, yeah.
It was created by by presidential proclamation or presidential uh presidential decree.
Come again, Mister Speaker, so um there was presidential proclamation first before the Republic Act?
No.
Or there was uh Republic Act and presidential proclamation?
During the time of uh President Corazon Aquino during the Revolutionary Government.
And that presidential proclamation is not included in this resolution?
It's it's not because uh it speaks only of the uh it speaks only of the regulatory jurisdiction and supervisory authority of the Legal Education Board of all uh uh legal education institutions.
I think that is material as far as this resolution is concerned uh because that is the subject of what we are talking right now, uh Mister Speaker. Um and unfortunately, I I want to connect the numbering of uh the uh Republic Act because accordingly, prior to presidential proclamation and I think presidential proclamation cannot alter a law, a law which is the Republic Act 1387. Am I right, Mister Speaker?
Yeah, may uh during the time of uh Kore Aquino, it is a freedom government, Revolutionary Government, and the president is allowed to make laws. Just like that during the time of Marcos Mazzaloi era.
So the amendment that we are talking about is an amendment through presidential proclamation.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And that presidential proclamation talks about the regulation of state colleges, universities?
No, the the presidential decree was on the stub uh creating the Mindanao State University system.
Is the creation of the Mindanao State University system?
Yes.
Uh and I think that is a material uh uh fact that has to be considered uh in the resolution, Mister Speaker. Again, uh Mister Speaker, going back to the number, while there was this uh um amendment uh through a presidential decree, um but uh there is also cited in the resolution, the creation of Republic Act 7662, which is the latter latter uh law. Uh am I right, Mister Speaker?
No, the Republic Act uh seven
662.
Seven 662 is the creation of the Legal Education Board.
Uh exactly my point, Mister Speaker. Um these are two separate laws, but the creation of the Republic uh the Republic Act 7662 has bearing on the implementation of Republic Act 1387. Am I right, Mister Speaker?
Uh will you please uh?
Yeah, yeah, Republic. If I may intervene, Republic Act 7662 speaks of the creation of Legal Education Board and its jurisdictions.
Right.
Uh I think the part of the dispute is in the power of the Legal Education Board to accredit uh MSU system as uh as under their jurisdiction because under the Lib law, uh it is the Lib that accredits all law schools.
Um Mister Speaker, actually, I'm going there. Mister Speaker, I'm just laying the premise because according to the numbering of the law, 1387's eighty, uh 1387 as against 7662, um napakalaki ng difference, no? That means to say the recent law that governs is the recent one. Am I right on this, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker, but uh the RA 76 7662 itself under um it it accredit uh law schools which have been under the Dex before. Okay, and the Mindanao State University, the Mindanao State University has never been under the Fed or under Dex, except that the board is chaired by the Secretary of of Dex at that time.
Um thank you, Mister Speaker, for that answer. Um the Dex was recently um amended by the creation of the Commission on Higher Education. Am I right, Mister Speaker?
The the Mindanao State University College of Law is an institution of higher education?
Yes, Mister Speaker. Precisely, it's governed by the Commission on Higher uh Commission on Higher Education. And the Commission on Higher Education was recently um um established by breaking the Department of Education into three, that is Department of Education, Technical Education, which is the TESDA, and the Commission on Higher Education.
Yes, Mister Speaker, but again, um the Mindanao State University having its own charter is not even under, no, it's not under CHED. The chairman is, the chairman of the CHED is only the chairman of the of the Board of MSU. Okay, so it is more on the policy uh that CHED comes in for the Mindanao State University.
Okay, um bearing of um uh having that statement, Mister Speaker, no, I'll jump to that. Uh but again, uh don't misinterpret me.
Yes, sure, sure.
As against, no, kasi.
No, no, yeah.
Patapas yung merit of what we are doing, no?
Yes, yes, point.
Okay, um sige, if if uh di ba yung isang isang organization um in a normal organization or in academ, meron nagre-regulate?
Meron ano po?
Nagre-regulate aside from its own. Yung bahay mo, siyempre ikaw yung, ikaw yung 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 pamilya, merong, kumbaga, meron, meron kayong isang um ano to, kayo yung naggo-govern pero um uh sa labas niyan, meron ding mga ordinances na um sinusunod yung isang pamilya. For example, um paano magtapo ng basura? Ah, paano yung, kung may kopyo, may mga sinusunod tayong bata. So in other words, we follow some regulations. In the case of the MSU, who regulates MSU?
Uh before I will that, I will answer that, Mister Speaker, may I request uh attorney uh uh the chairman of the Committee on on
Justice.
On justice to to intervene, Mister Speaker.
To intervene? Yeah, I am recognizing the intervener, Deputy Plorina.
Uh Mister Chair, first, I would like to elucidate that the Republic Act 1387 was amended by Republic Act 1893.
1893, no?
Then subsequently, it was amended by Republic Act 3791.
3791.
And Republic Act Number 5868.
3868, siroon ang dami nating namiss.
But the provision of 3868 in the amending law of 3791 provide MSU with a charter to provide technical and professional training, meaning law courses are considered professional, uh professional education. Therefore, from the viewpoint of the charter, they are provided with the mandate to provide professional training which include not only medicine but law. And the the supervisory management of the university is bedded under Section 4 of the mandatory law to the Board of Regents. So the conflict now is the supervision of the Department of Education, it was transferred to the Lib, did not include chartered universities or state universities because by their charter, they are given the mandate to operate under the supervision of their own Board of Regents. So it is therefore not under the Lib because uh Lib's permission should be for all professional education originally vested in the Department of Education, but not in the Board of Regents. That seemingly is the legal issue between the MSU and the Lib. Um, thank you, Mister Speaker.
Ang issue yet, I may intervene. I have little knowledge about the issue. Yung regulatory powers of the Lib to accredit MSU, that is the main issue, is Lib as regulatory power of your MSU.
Yeah, and if if not Lib, who regulates? No, no, you cannot, you cannot regulate your own. That has to be outside from your own organization.
Because, Mister Chair, I will read the provision of Republic Act, the latest amendment of Republic Act and this amendment to the charter. It says
Uh that is RA?
That is RA, this is the latest, eight, the RA 3868.
Yeah.
The provision of sections will provide that the government of the Mindanao State University lies in its Board of Regents. I read Section 4. The provision is very clear that the government, it did not specifically mention as a state university that it is under CHED, under the Fed and under any other institution.
Nor it didn't also state?
Nor it does state that any illegal education that can be established can be supervised by the said supervised the state university. That's the conflict now because Lib assumes that all professional education is within the jurisdiction of the Lib. But state university is mandated by the charter to provide technical and professional trainings to all students. So that's the, I think, the main issue why the legal issues been brought to the Supreme Court because to the MSU, the assumption of jurisdiction by the Lib is ultra-berrys, meaning it exercises jurisdiction beyond the limits of its jurisdiction.
Okay, um I will not push my my luck here because I'm talking to a lawyer, a seasoned lawyer, uh Mister Speaker, but um I think what they have said, Mister Speaker, is not reflected in the resolution, uh Mister Speaker. And that's why I'm not so convinced because the order of the where assess didn't specifically mention all those things that they have um 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 mentioned earlier as an argument to this position of the assembly, of this uh uh the BTA, Mister Speaker. But nonetheless, Mister Speaker, I hope that whatever is the resolution, the resolution of this would be for the benefit of the Bangsamoro, especially for those aspiring um uh students, law students, because the moment this news, actually, when when this news broke up, I immediately shared it to the BTA Parliament chat because I was worried that uh because we've been producing so many lawyers and if we stop this process, chances are the 30 years of uh being uh having a backlog on education would continue and still persist, Mister Speaker. So thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum Warahmatullahi Ta'ala Wa Barakatuh.
Wa barakatuh. Just for for an information also, the University of the Philippines College of Law is not under Lib because it has its own charter mandated to offer uh uh professional, professional and and technical training, Mister Speaker. College of Law, College of Law.
Uh Mister Speaker.
Uh may may additional po?
Yeah, yeah. Mister Speaker. Under Section 6 of the Amendatory Charter, MSU provides to receive to receive and approve appropriate to the end, specifically, to provide for the establishment of one or more College of Liberal Arts, College of Law, or College of Social Sciences, meaning College of Law, as specifically can mention.
Actually, with your respect to you, that is not the issue. Uh, uh, it's not the issue if the, they can have, uh, these colleges, the issue is this ma- this power jurisdiction of the LEB, if they can regulate MSU, that is the issue. Yeah, that is the main issue, if the group can regulate, uh, or, uh, MSU, uh, state universities.
And, Mr. Speaker, and, Mr. Speaker, that is the reason why, uh, it has reached the Supreme Court already for valid decision, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, uh.
Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, the, the gentleman from, uh, is very eager to ask questions, uh, we recognize, uh, Member Parliament, Alimuntaha, uh, Datodakula, Datuwarun Babao.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Floor Leader.
Yung, yung amen.
Um, well, uh, before I, I, I stand up here, one of our colleague asked me whether I got, I am a product of the Mindanao State University, I said, "No." But, uh, I just want to know, to find out whether the proponent is willing to, uh, answer some clarificatory questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First, uh, question is, there is a mention of refusal by the Mindanao State University Board to comply with, uh, uh, regulations. Do you know what kind of, uh, regulations that, uh, the MSU Board, uh, Board of Regents have, have not complied with? This is one of the reasons why, cited reasons of the lead, uh, decision of proposing to cancel the, the, or license of the MSU College of Law, is because they have, they have, uh, they refuse to comply with, uh, with some regulations. What are those regulations that will not comply with the MSU Board of Regents?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, before I will answer that, uh, that clarificatory question of the gentleman from, from, from Leno- from Leno Del Sur.
And Palawan.
And Palawan, uh.
Is Palawan part of Bar? Because it's part of the Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Clarify, uh, the, the, the gentleman is a member of the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education. But, uh, technically, but, Mr. Speaker, I, 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 I will still, uh, uh, respond to his, uh, question. Yeah, the question now is on the regulatory supervision of, of the LEB, no, over MSU. LEB, the Legal Education Board, is insisting that the Mindanao State University College of Law is under the regulatory, uh, jurisdiction of LEB, which the Mindanao State University refused, but it is not. So, and the, yung one question about the jurisdiction, MSU is saying, "No, you are not, we are not under your jurisdiction," and LEB is saying, "You are under our jurisdiction." That's why the question now is being raised to the Supreme Court, which is the proper, uh, forum.
Of course, Mr. Speaker, uh, the, the MSU Board of Regents has all the reasons to refuse, because MSU has its own charter. So, I really don't know whether, uh, despite the fact that there is a, a charter, uh, by the MSU, I, I don't know whether, uh, the, the LEB, uh, Legal Education, uh, uh, Board or whatever
Board.
is really had that to supervise, to regulate, uh, such, uh, institution as the Mindanao State University. Mr. Speaker, let us not forget that, uh, I am not also a lawyer, similar to Madam, uh, Bay- Bay Intan. But, uh, I know pretty well that a mere resolution cannot amend an existing law. Walang, walang, uh, there is such thing as a resolution or of that kind can repeal an existing law created by Congress.
Mr. Speaker.
But remember, that, uh, MSU was created by several, uh, uh, proclamations and, uh, laws passed by Congress. But here come, uh, this state that is trying to, to, uh, uh, you know, uh, create, uh, to, to MSU by, uh, proposing the suspicion of the College of Law. But before that, I would like to remind, for the uninformation of my colleagues, 'yung MSU naging, uh, naging karangalan natin mga Moro, because if I remember in the nineteen eighties, one of the top, uh, number two bar, uh, exact, uh, top nature is a graduate of the Mindanao State University. And every time there is a bar examination, hindi ro, nasisiro ang MSU, always on top. Pero suddenly, uh, biglang kasabihin nila na kailangan i-calculation natin ito. I myself personally, I cannot, uh, agree with this. We have to stop these, uh, hallucinations by the national government by closing a, uh, by stopping the, the educational growth of our people, much more with our youth. So, because of that, uh, um, Mr. Speaker, I am now registering my strong support to the passage of this resolution of pushing and objecting to the decision of LEB to cancel whatever 'yung kanilang iniisip na patigilin o inisarado ang ating College of Law, uh, sa Mindanao State University. But before that, we are know from the proponent, how many branches of, uh, the MSU that is offering law?
We have, uh,
Aside from the main, uh, MSU.
Yeah, yeah, aside from the main, we have, um, extension campuses of the College of Law in Tawi-Tawi, Enshulu, and Magindanao. So, there are three extension campuses of the College of Law.
What about the MSU illegal situ- technology? Are na the, the, hindi ba sila nagoffer ng law?
Uh.
IIT?
Yeah.
MSU IIT?
I think IIT is not offering College of Law.
They're not offering College.
Uh, law.
They're not offering College of Law.
They are.
Yeah, I think they're offering College of Law. As a matter of fact, they have more, they have more passes than the main campus.
So, apat pala, apat pala ang ano, uh, apat ang campuses, yeah, uh, offering, uh, offering legal, uh, education.
Now, uh, lastly, Mr. Speaker, it is my personal suspicion, but because of our strong desire, determination by the Bangsa Moro people to promote, encourage, nono, the regional government for the Sariya Courts to be established, para ma-biging lumakas ang, ang Sariya Law within our homeland, hindi kaya ito, hindi kaya ito, Mr. Speaker, may kinalaman dito sa, uh, decision ng LEB, sapagkat ang MSU ay talagang nangunguna, there in the forefront of, uh, you know, promoting the, the Sariya Law, uh, the, the creation of Sariya Courts within our homeland. May, may kinalaman ba ito, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, unang una po, ako'y nagpakasalamat sa ating kasamahan na taga, ang ating mambabatas, galing sa Leno Del Sur, na sumusuporta po dito sa resolution na to. At, uh, siya mismo po ang nagsasabi na the College of Law is producing, uh, ex- uh, exceptional graduates, no? Uh, so, 'yung sa tanong po na ito ba ay may kinalaman, uh, Mr. Speaker, I cannot insi- I cannot, uh, insinuate, uh, kung ano man po yan, whether mayroon o wala, ang, I'm just limited, Mr. Speaker, to the, to the resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, I would like to, to inform this august chamber of my belief that a, a mere resolution under our legal parlance, I am not a lawyer, I repeat, but as a legal practice, a mere resolution from LEB cannot, uh, override a provision of Republic Act, which is, uh, a creation of Congress. Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, the, our resolution is not to amend any law, it is just expressing our support to the, to the action of the Mindanao State.
No, I am not agreeing to the resolution, Mr. Speaker. I am agreeing to the law, to the resolution of LEB.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, uh, miscommunicate. The gentleman from Tawi-Tawi
Yeah.
had, uh, misheard, uh, my statement. Thank you very much.
Uh, that, this is the question being raised now by the, by the Mindanao State University. The Mindanao State University is using its creation by law as a defense, why we are, why we are not under the regulatory jurisdiction of the LEB. And the LEB also, which is also created by law, uh, is saying that the Mindanao State University is under the, the, the jurisdiction of LEB. Uh, ito na po 'yung, 'yung dilemma, ito na po 'yung question. Kaya, ang Mindanao State University na po, with that, uh, resolution made by, made by, by LEB, uh, sa tingin natin po, tama po si, ang ating, uh, mahal na mambabatas, galing sa Leno, na 'yung resolution po ng, 'yung resolution po ng LEB cannot, uh, cannot, uh, amend the creation, uh, of the Mindanao State University. Tama po yun?
Yeah, because, Mr. Speaker, this mission and regulatory, uh, power is stayed within the, the MSU Board of Regents. Similar to the practice with the, the University of the Philippines. So, I think, I think, uh, it's my belief that the LEB cannot interfere with the affairs of the, the Mindanao State, uh, University as far as the regulatory and supervisory power, it is stayed within the Board of Regents of the MSU. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, uh, one, one minute, uh, suspension. Uh, I, I urge my deputy, my fellow deputy speaker to preside first, because I have, uh, clarificatory questions.
Session resume. Madam Floor Leader, yes, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker, uh, Paisalin Tago. The good Deputy Speaker Congressman Paisalin Tago is recognized.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, uh, Presiding Officers, if the Chair, my, our professor in the Parliament is willing to accept some clarificatory questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, before I make many clarificatory questions, again record, I support the clamor of the uh, students of the Mindanao State University and even graduates of the Mindanao State University, uh, uh, for supporting the clamor that the liberation, especially the MSU College of Law. Because, uh, the MSU College of Law has been existing for some time and they have produced so many lawyers, Bangsa Moro lawyers at that. Uh, but I have clarificatory questions, uh, regarding this. Uh, kanina, tinanong, 'yung creation ng MSU, you know the story why, why MSU was created, uh, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Why? What is the story?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, kung para po sa kalaman, ka- kaalaman din ng lahat, bago ko, bago po, uh, nagkaroon tayo ng Mindanao State University, meron po tayo Kamblon Rebellion in Holo Enshulu, uh, Mr. Speaker. And, uh, when the late Maas Kamblon, no, was, uh, uh, came to the force of the law, may usapan po, at ang hiningi po ni Maas Kamblon is for the university to establish, is, is the best for the Muslims, po, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
At 'yan po, kung bakit napa, kung bakit po napanganak ang Mindanao State University, Mr. Speaker?
This is a product, is another product of the Moro Rebellion in the, in, in our area.
Yes, I agree, Mr. Speaker.
At the time, Kamblon demands education, so the Bangsa Moro people, they will look to, oh, ang Bangsa Moro people at that time. That's why the Mindanao State University was established.
Yes, yes, I agree, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, for the education ng iba, kasi pa, alam ng iba. Now, go back, we go back to the, uh, issue at hand, which is the resolution, this resolution, the resolution speaks of our strong support to the Mindanao State University.
To continue offering legal education.
To offering, that's it, this resolution has legal impact. If we pass this resolution, can it persuade the Supreme Court or the Legal Education Board to, uh, overturn your judgment on the, the MSU College of Law?
Mr. Speaker, I, I feel that, uh, if, if, uh, the Supreme Court, even, uh, the LEB, um, will have this sense of the Parliament, uh, I think, uh, it has an impact on, on, on the decision. It may, you know, we, we do not know, but I believe it will have an impact, Mr. Speaker, on, on the question at hand.
Tase, with your respect, uh, wag sa natin mapontive ng Supreme Court, nakaa-strike to na ang Supreme Court. Ola, tinanggal na ang Sulu. Now naman tinanggal sa akin ang College of Law. Ano kayang miss, na natanggal rin. Yeah, that is, uh, depending aside, but, uh, yeah, Speaker, letting something, ano kayang mangyari?
Yeah.
Because, uh, this is, this is, uh, critical issue. This is a College of Law that is being, uh, uh, meaning it will be unserviceable, it will not service our, not only the people of the Bangsa Moro. MSU is catering, the engaging peoples in Mindanao. Buto lang, sorry ka, misami sorry ka, misami, yeah, catering.
Even, yeah, even as far as solution in Visayas, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, yeah, that's right, because of his, uh, low, low matrícula. He shouldn't, that's why they come to MSU and, you know, elect the place.
And also, the Mindanao State University is also considered as a national university, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, yes. So, what, 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 uh, how can we, can we think of another thing that was, that can change or that can overturn the decision of the LEB or the Supreme Court that, uh, will go in favor, uh, to us?
I do not know legally, Mr. Speaker, but, uh, since, uh, I think the alumni of, the alumni of the Mindanao State University College of Law has made its petition to the Supreme Court on this issue, Mr. Speaker. I do not know legally, Mr. Speaker, if, um, if we can, no, if, if, if BAR can intervene, no? Uh, in the petition of the Supreme Court by the, uh, by the alumni College of Law of the Mindanao State University. As soon by, by the principal author kanina, uh, 'yung mga graduates ng MSU, I think about eight of them, sila po 'yung nagpetition sa Supreme Court po.
Tase, on the jurisdiction of the LEB, that's what I worry about. Kaya nga sabi ko nga dapat merong back channel report, because previously, the Supreme Court sustained the mandate of the LEB on the accreditation of law schools. In the meantime case, they sustained the power of LEB to, uh, regulate all law schools. In the preliminary case, they sustained the power of law to regulate all law schools in the preliminary case, which was decided on November 2021.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, as far as the mandate of the law, no, um, it's very clear that they have the, that they have the uh, jurisdiction, no? Over all legal education in the Philippines, but, but the charter of, of the Mindanao State University specifies that uh, it can offer, uh, it can offer uh, legal education and also the board, uh, the Board of Regents of the Mindanao State University, uh, which is the governing board, uh, believes that uh, it has the, uh, the, the, the law has no uh, jurisdiction over the Mindanao State University. I have attended, I think about two to three already meetings of the board when this was, when, when this uh, when this was discussed. Kaya 'yun po ang paniniwala, 'yun po ang paniniwala ng Mindanao State University na hindi po kami under the jurisdiction of ano, of uh, of law. While law also is saying you are, kaya the issue, we, this is now the issue at hand, Mr. Speaker. Ang ating resolution lang po, Mr. Speaker, is supporting the Mindanao State University to continue offering legal education for the Bangsa Moro people.
Of course, uh, lahat naman tayo mag-support na dito sa resolution, no, no, I don't think uh, one of us will not support, we will uh, definitely support, kasi directly or indirectly affected tayo. May mga kamaganak tayo, studentin 'yan sa MSU, naggraduate 'yan sa MSU College of Law. Ang worry ko lang, 'yung anong impact nitong resolution na it can, can it overturn the judgment of the Supreme Court or the judgment or, or the judgment of the law? Oh, kasi sa akin, sa aking pananaw, uh, ang law kasi may sisila sa Supreme Court. Dapat pausapin na lang, ma- mag-usap na lang ng, magkaroon ng medisyo na lang. Ang ganyan ng hindi pagkakaitin 'yan, kasi pag nagdecide ng Supreme Court, that's what happened to Sulu. Mag-decide sila immediately, executor, ano na tayo magagawa?
Uh, definitely, Mr. Speaker, ang resolution na 'to, uh, hindi naman masabi natin it can overturn, ano, no? Uh, kung mayroon ng decision, pero ito sa palagi ko, nakakatulong itong resolution na 'to para sa MSU po. Parang ganun lang po, no? But uh, on the legal context, on the legal uh, aspect of, of the issue, eh, hindi po, no? Sa palagi ko, itong resolution na 'to nakakatulong lang, no? Nakakatulong lang para sa MSU po. Pero kung ano man ang legal, ang magiging legal decision ng Supreme Court on this, then uh, sa palagi ko, hindi naman po, uh, uh, itong, itong resolution natin ito na maka-influence, ng ano, maka-influence ng, ng decision ng Supreme Court.
Mr. Speaker, kailan final 'yung appeal ng MSU sa Supreme Court? Kailan na file 'yun?
'Yun?
Ngayon September yata, no? Bago lang September.
Bago lang, bago lang po.
Last week, if I'm not mistaken, last week of September.
Ah, Supreme Court, yeah.
Sa Supreme, 'yung sa Supreme Court.
September.
'Yung may picture ka niya, pinakita niya?
Pinakita mo kanina?
Oh, I think that was uh, early September. Oh, last week, if I'm not mistaken, last week of September.
Yeah. 'Yung meeting natin sa ano, no? Sa twenty...
Hindi kasi ang, ang, that's why I'm asking that, kasi hindi pwede nag, baka hindi pa sumasagutang law or other intervenors. Uh, we can uh, if parliament can support the appeal of the law in, in whatever, in another way, in whatever way that we can support.
Yeah. Oh. September 26 pala na filed.
Oo nga, last week, oo.
September 26.
Last week of September na file 'yun. So 'yun ang kung, kasi ang kung ano, uh, totally, the church unit, the, the decision, that's why I know the preliminary case. In the preliminary case, they sustain the power of the law to regulate uh, uh, law schools. Ang dinisalo nila, kaya wala nga 'yung mga inmate, 'yung nakukuha ng exam. Dati pisat, may pipi, pisat, 'yung nakukuha ng exam, 'yung mag uh, kukuha ng College of Law, 'yun ang diniklo ng Supreme Court na encostational, because dati sa bahay encouragement of the academic freedom. Dati may mga exam, exam no na uniform exams, bago ka pumasok sa law schools. So 'yun lang ang isang uh, worry ko na, how can we help the MSU system na matulungan natin sila mapanali itong kasunay 'to? Because we, we really support this uh, resolution.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, can, can, ano, can the Interpretor have any suggestion on how we can help the Mindanao State University aside from this resolution?
Because Empelorena is the constant visitor of the Supreme Court. Uh, he can help a lot. Impidyo, he has so many friends and he has so many friends lawyers, practicing lawyers, that uh, we can uh, uh, help the lawyers from the MSU to support them. 'Yun lang, 'yun lang nga lang, yeah, Mr. Speaker, yeah, 'yun lang ang worry ko. Yeah, the, how the forcefulness or the impact of this resolution, not at Caney Burton, but 'yun ang pinagaralan, kasi 'yung power talaga ng law, it was uh, sustained by the Supreme Court to accredit law schools, so 'yun.
Deputy Speaker Tago, do you have any proposal with respect to this?
'Yun nga.
Would you like to discuss this first, refer back to the committee or proceed with?
We approve this, this amendments for the wording. We can approve this resolution, but we can meet and whatever support uh, through caucus or other meetings, we can do how to support the MSU College of Law. Maintain the status sa, sa College of Law and uh, the continue. Kasi natatakot 'yan 'yung mga estudyante, nagkaintrol ka, biglang sasabi na lang na tumigil ka, kasi hindi ka na uh, 'yung eskwelahan mo hindi accredit eh.
And 'yun.
Kasi for the permission of the body, di ba may mga ISO sa transcript of records? Pag uh, sakwa ka, angche, ang nabibigay ng ISO, pag sakwa, and repeat. Ang nagbibigay ng ISO ngayon ng mga College of Law, ang...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, 'yun. Although, ma'kin, patatuloy mo pagaral mo, pero wala kang, or wala, transcript of records, wala kang record.
Uh, Diestago, just uh, I would like to profound just one question on you as Interpretor. Um, who accepts? Uh, who accepts as, uh, who accepts the application of law school graduates to take the bar exam?
To take the bar exam, it is the Supreme Court, pero...
The office of the bar confidant?
Bar confidant, yes. Magapply ka sa Supreme Court.
Yes, and uh, does the bar confidant require the submission of a document from law? Recognizing the law graduate as qualified to take the bar exam? Or is it the CHED who issues that?
Uh, ang issue yata 'yung sa transcript of record, kasi parang, di ba, may mga ISO number, 'yung...
Yeah, the special order is required for those who are not the autonomous.
If your transcript of record is authentic and it is acknowledged by a particular...
By the CHED.
By the particular institute, CHED, law or repeat. That's the worry there.
Would you like that uh, context included in the uh, current resolution? Or would that be in another uh, action?
Another, maybe in other actions. In order not uh, because this is, I think this is an urgent resolution in order not to prolong the, the approval of this resolution.
Madam Speaker, as to, um, my, my sense is, as to the legal issue, I think we have to leave it to the Supreme Court already, because there is, there is already a petition filed, no? On the legality or on the legal question of, of that. What we are just trying to, what we, what, what the parliament is trying to do with this resolution is just express the support for the continuing uh, legal education to be offered by the Mindanao State University for our people. So, 'yun lang, no? It is just on that ground, but the legal, we leave it to the Supreme Court already. Which is the proper venue.
Uh, Madam Floor Leader, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all, uh, Presiding Officers.
Thank you very much. Session suspended for just for one minute.
If interest lang mananastay, whether it's just an explanation. Kasi alangan naman na maggiegive up na tayo kung mananalo. Ah, sige, pag sa minuto, sige.
Uh, what's the situation of the floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, considering that there, there's a number of members of the parliament we can interpolate, I move that we defer uh, the continuation of the interpolation of the proposed resolution.
Until tomorrow.
Until tomorrow, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to defer consideration of Committee Report Number 88 uh, for tomorrow's session. Uh, there being no objection, this issue may approve.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I think the floor leader wants to make a manifestation on the other matters.
The floor leader is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, while we understand that we have deferred deliberation on Committee Report Number 88, that uh, goes also for Committee Report Numbers 89, 90, and 91, which will be continued tomorrow, Mr. Speaker. But I would like to speak uh, on the matter of committee memberships, Mr. Speaker. On account of the um, unfortunate resignation of one of the members of the parliament, Mr. Speaker, that leaves some space for committees where uh, the, our former colleague was a either an officer or a member of, Mr. Speaker. So um, I would like to ask for the confirmation and approval of this honorable body for the changes in committee memberships in the following manner, Mr. Speaker. First, we note the withdrawal of MPs Mualil and Munyos as regular members of the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice. And also uh, would like to inform the body of the request of MP Don Mustafa Luong and Deputy Speaker Misswari, Abdul Karim Misswari to be appointed as regular members of the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice Systems. So uh, we, I move that we approve the withdrawal of MP Mualil and MP Munyos as regular members of the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice Systems and approve the membership of MP Don Mustafa Luong and Deputy Speaker Abdul Karim Misswari as regular members of the committee, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion stating there being no objection, this issue may approve.
Next, Mr. Speaker, on account of uh, the um, vacancy in the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, I move that we approve MP Khalid Abdullah, Haji Abdullah as an additional member of the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management.
No object. Uh, there, in view of the vacancy, uh, in the membership in the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, the vacancy will be filled out by MP, sino?
Kyle Haji Abdullah.
Kyle Haji Abdullah. If there are any objection, there being no objection, this issue may approve.
Mr. Speaker, um, I would also like to ask for the approval of this body for the replacement as Chairperson of the uh, Committee on Transportation and Communications of MP Kelly Antao, replacing MP Bai Ling Mantawin, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to replace uh, MP Bai Ling Mantawin as Chair of the Committee on Transportation and Communication uh, in favor of MP Kinney Antao. There being no objection, this issue may approve.
Mr. Speaker, on the Committee on Amendments, uh, I would like to ask for the approval of this body for the replacement of MP Attorney Obayda Pakasem as Chair to be replaced by MP Bai Ling Mantawin, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to replace uh, Minister, magobject ka? Okay, uh, to replace Chair of the Amendments, in favor of MP Bai Ling Mantawin. There being no objection, this issue may approve.
And finally, Mr. Speaker, um, on account of the vacancy in the Committee on Accounts chairmanship, I move that we approve the membership of and the chairmanship of MP Jamel Makakuwa.
There is a view of the vacancy, oh, Tansy Jam. Oh, 'yun, 'yun pala. Uh, in view of the vacancy, Abakanse, in the uh, Committee on Accounts Chair, uh, and this issue will be filled out by MP Jamel Makakuwa. There being no objection, this issue may approve.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
That's all?
Yes, I move that we adjourn, ano, suspend, Mr. Speaker, until 1 o'clock PM tomorrow.
There is a motion to suspend until 1 PM tomorrow.